Waiting for our cue.
Yeah, I guess.
Good evening. My name is Ally Webster and I'm the president of the Northern Iowa Student Government. I want to welcome everyone to this, I want to welcome everyone to this evening's debate. I also want to say, want to thank three nonpartisan organizations who are sponsoring this debate, namely, Women of Action, Cedar Falls Waterloo Branch of the American Association of Women, and the organization in which I represent, the Northern Iowa Student Government. Next, I want to extend my thanks to our two moderators for assisting us conduct a fair and civil debate. They are Dr. Allison Rank, Director of UNI Center for Civic Education, and Dr. Scott Peters, Professor and Head of UNI's Department of Political Science and Criminology. Our timekeepers for tonight's debate are Gabriel Salazar, Vice President of the Northern Iowa Student Government, and Dr. Steve Corbin, Emeritus Professor of Marketing at UNI. We're grateful to the City of Waterloo for permitting us to host the debate in the council chambers, as well as to the Waterloo Community Public Access Television for broadcasting this debate. There are five positions for the City of Waterloo that are on the Tuesday, November 4th ballot. Our debate will go in this order: Ward 1, then Ward 3, next will be Ward 5, at-large candidates are next, and finally, mayoral candidates. There will be an approximate five-minute break between the debates so the next group of candidates can be seated. Residents of Waterloo were given the opportunity to submit candidate questions either online or by telephone. The moderators were given the questions submitted by the public. Due to the professional background of our moderators, they have been given the privilege to modify the questions for the sake of clarity. Each of the city council candidates will be allotted 90 seconds for their opening remark. The four, the four mayoral candidates may have two minutes for their opening remarks. All candidates have been apprised they will have one minute for their closing statement and have been asked to keep their responses to debate questions in 60 seconds or less. Should any candidate want to make a rebuttal comment, he or she will be limited to 30 seconds to make their case. Moderators have permission to stop the rebuttal commentary if they feel the issue being discussed has sufficiently aired. The timekeepers will apprise candidates when they have 15 seconds left of their allotted time and a red-colored stop sign will be displayed to apprise candidates that their time has expired. Due to the time allotted for tonight's debate, I ask that all candidates not exceed their allotted time period. Thank you for keeping your answer to a debate question focused, concrete, and to the point. Should a candidate go beyond their allotted time period, the moderators and timekeepers have the debate sponsor's permission to interrupt him or her, move on to the next question, and if necessary, penalize the candidate's time the next time she or he is asked to respond to a question. The public needs to know that each of the 12 Waterloo residents seeking public office were notified about the debate schedule and the protocol I have just shared with you. Follow-up calls are made to three of the 12 candidates who do not indicate whether they would participate in tonight's debate or not. We know that two of the three cannot attend tonight's debate and a third candidate is unsure. We will start tonight's debate with the candidates seeking office in Ward 1. In alphabetical order, they are John Childs, Margaret Klein, and Steve Schmidt. John Childs said he will not be attending tonight's debate. Let's start with the two candidates in attendance giving us their 90-second opening remark. We'll go in alphabetical, alphabetical order, Margaret, then Steve. After that, our moderators will ask their first question. Margaret, your 90-second opening statement, please.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to this debate. I'm Margaret Klein. I was raised in Waterloo. My seven children, only one of them has left Waterloo for Denver, Colorado. The others are in the Cedar Valley, mostly in Waterloo. I have 25 grandchildren, 22 of whom live in Waterloo or Cedar Falls. I would say I have a vested interest in the business of Waterloo. I want it to stay healthy so that my family can enjoy long lives here surrounding me. I've always been interested in politics and how the mechanics of a city works. My concerns for Waterloo at this time are the high taxes. That is number one. It's absolutely forcing people out of their homes, retired people on fixed incomes. My second concern is the increasing amount of gun violence. That is terribly concerning. We're getting a reputation and it's not the kind that we want to have. I want to do some severe pushback on that. And the third is the business deals that the city itself conducts. I find them flawed, I find them short-sighted, and I don't find them to be fair to all areas of Waterloo. And that's my opening remark.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. My name is Steve Schmidt and I want to thank the UNI Student Government for putting this debate on and inviting all the candidates. I am a proud UNI graduate, as are four of my six kids and most of my siblings and nieces and nephews. I've spent the last 40 years in the field of technology and telecommunications. During that time, I've worked with a couple of different companies that started out at pretty much ground level and grew to multimillion-dollar, multi-billion-dollar operations and I was at a director level. Also, over the last 40 years, I've had the opportunity to start three of my own very successful businesses with operations here in Waterloo and then also in Cedar Rapids and Dubuque. And so I think I've learned a lot and bring a lot to the discussion with that business experience. I've also had the opportunity to serve on the Waterloo City Council previously for 12 years. And for folks that look at my record, you will see that every year during that 12-year period, I voted for tax reductions. A lot of candidates talk about tax reductions, but I voted for tax reductions. Every year, I presented proposals to the council and the mayor at that time of ways to reduce the cost of doing business in Waterloo in order to accommodate those tax reductions. One of the 12 years, we were able to get that done, but the other 11 not quite so successful. Thank you.
All right. And so with that, Steve, we'll send the first question your way. Can you describe your public service experience, including your engagement with local government committees or community advocacy and how it prepares you for this office?
Yes. As I mentioned, 12 years on the city council. I have been on a number of different boards and commissions. And again, I think I've learned an awful lot from those. A number of them over the last 15, 20 years have been in a similar situation as Waterloo's government as far as struggling financially. I think about my time on the Waterloo-Cairfall Symphony Orchestra Board, where we had to go through some reduction in staff there, which we didn't want to do. And we went through some merging of positions, which we didn't want to do, but that's what we had to do. At that time, the Boston Symphony was closing up due to bankruptcy, but the Waterloo-Cairfall Symphony survived and it's flourished. We got a new director and it's done very well. Spent time on the Salvation Army Board, the Boys and Girls Club Board, and again, similar situations on those that we went through replacing directors or having to deal with financial situations, very similar to what City of Waterloo's having to deal with also.
Margaret?
I also served on the city council for four years. I was on the Finance Committee during that time, learned an awful lot while I was on that committee. I was on the Library Board and the Airport Board. And in my private life, I'm very involved in my Roman Catholic community as a member of the Board of Education at periods of time in my life and on parish councils. And I happen to be involved in running a huge charity that we devote our time to throughout the year at my current parish, Blessed Sacrament.
Okay.
So our next question, we'll start with you, Margaret. With state changes in property tax laws and the phasing out of backfill funds reducing revenues, how would you address spending on essential services?
On essential services?
Yes.
I don't think we can cut essential services. Are you talking fire and police, I'm sure? We need our police here in light of the violence that we are experiencing. And we have, our downtown area and large swathes of the east side are old stock dwellings and to cut our firemen would be awful. I believe that we can make up that differential in other ways, in the deals that we make for developments. In the TIF funds, we currently opt out many of our neighborhoods from paying into the general fund because they're in what's called a TIF fund. And that takes all that money out of the general fund, which starves us, which creates a situation where you have to raise taxes to make up the difference. I would change and encourage the council and the mayor to change the way we are dealing with TIF.
Okay. Steve?
Over the years, I've been very involved with an organization called Grow Cedar Valley. That's our former Chamber of Commerce. And I've been on a number of different commissions within that group. And during that time, I've had the opportunity to visit with a number of state legislators. And I think part of what they're trying to do, I don't think I know, because I've talked to them, they're trying to incentivize with a stick or a carrot, local governments to be more efficient. And I think you can look around the state and see some communities have done that. We look at our neighbor community, Cedar Falls. Their tax rate is virtually half what our tax rate is because they have been willing to adjust things. They went from 18 to 20 department heads to six over a period of time. They did that 20 years ago. Waterloo has started down that path, but we've still got a long ways to go. There are just any number of efficiencies that could be realized at the Waterloo government if we have a majority of the council members and a mayor that are willing to sit down and make some of those tough decisions.
All right. Thank you. Steve, the next question, what are your strategies for reversing Waterloo's population decline?
That is a great question and that was, again, just brought up recently at one of these gatherings. Waterloo is the only community in the top 20 in Iowa that is projected to not grow over the next 20 years. I've talked about that for a number of years. What we need more than anything else is we need jobs in Waterloo. And when I talk to business people, what they tell me, the two primary reasons they cannot get major employers to come to Waterloo is our high tax rate. We have the highest tax rate virtually every year of all the major cities. I'm not talking about HUD, CEN, or DURE, but of the major cities in Waterloo, we've got the highest tax rate consistently. And then the other thing is the crime that we deal with. And that's part of a big city. I mean, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, they have their crime too. But ours seems to be a little more out of control. This most previous police chief we had, from what I saw, and again, I was off the council by then, but from what I saw, that was a very mishandled situation. I don't know what the council and the mayor were doing at the time, but it was the wrong thing, so.
Thank you. Margaret?
I would agree. Taxes are a killer of communities. They just are. People look at different communities when they move to the area and they say, "What is the value of paying almost twice as much in taxes for Waterloo? Where is that value?" And then they visit the downtown area. And the downtown area looks depressed. We have buildings collapsing over here. We have a homeless problem we need to address. We need to address those people directly. No one should be homeless here. Our services should go out to them and render service to them. It is just, taxes are the driving force. I know I keep saying that, but it's true. It allows crime to come in because as people move out, more homes are converted to rentals and sometimes rentals create a situation where it invites people who don't have a stake in the city.
Okay. Margaret, starting with you this time. Waterloo has struggled with a shortage of affordable quality housing. What specific steps would you take to increase affordable housing options?
I would work with the Restore Group. I would work with that group to help. What they're doing in this city is wonderful. It is housing, it is refurbishing housing, it is taking core areas of our city. I wouldn't go out and build more. Waterloo has a great landmass and all that involves is us taking care of more streets, more everything. We have areas of our city that need to be revitalized and I love the way that they are doing it. Habitat for Humanity does an absolutely fabulous job. I love their model and I would encourage that.
Okay. Steve, to you, same question.
My understanding is Waterloo has the lowest-priced housing in Iowa. So when I hear this comment, I'm a little bit confused. I don't quite understand it. And I know there are a number of projects that are going on or have gone on recently that are geared towards moderate to low-income housing. When I was on the council in the, I think it was about 2011 or '12, we had a discussion about how Waterloo had no middle-to-upper-income housing development going on. All the developers left Waterloo because they didn't think they could make a profit on it. And I put together a committee with a number of local realtors, developers, and we formed what was called the CLURA. And that is where people building new medium-to-income-priced houses will get a tax rebate for the first three years. But again, going back to how do we get young people to come to Waterloo, affordable housing for what the type of housing they're looking for is what we need to be building. And that's resulted in, I think, there's seven different developments going on in Waterloo currently.
All right. Next question, Steve to you. With many infrastructure projects ongoing, how will you prioritize which streets, bridges, or utilities to upgrade next? What criteria will you use? Safety, traffic volume, equity of access, et cetera?
I believe, when I was on council, I believe they prioritize based on the five wards and also divided up equitably. I'm not sure today if that makes sense. As you mentioned, I think traffic should be a primary concern when it comes to highways and streets. I am concerned that recently, the city, as I understand it, is taking 20% of the 1% option tax that was going to the streets and are now dedicating that to property tax reduction. Which, I'm all about property tax reduction, but I don't think taking it from one pocket and putting it in another is a good answer. I also don't think we're doing a very good job right now of maintaining our streets. And as council member, former council member Klein mentioned, you know, we are continuing to expand the footprint of Waterloo, so we're going to need more rather than less. But I think we probably need to focus on, based on the traffic and the volume.
Thank you. Margaret?
I never approved of the, of the money for streets being split evenly among the wards because that meant that some of the newer neighborhoods constantly got their streets attended to over and over again while some areas of the city languished. There's more need in some areas of our city and I don't see that it's being attended to. And that need, I believe, is east of the river, south, north of the river, actually. We call it the east side. I grew up on the east side and I spend a lot of time over there. And I, I just see the streets are not in good condition. So I think, I think you go where the need is. I don't think you get so, so bound by, "I get more, my portion, you get your portion", even if you don't need your portion. Your portion might be needed over here this year. Let's get the streets taken care of that are in the worst condition.
Okay. Pardon me. How should the city address drug addiction and mental health challenges among Waterloo residents? And we'll start with you, Margaret.
Well, I approve of the social workers, or counselors, I think it is, traveling with the police, being with the police involving incidents where there's clear mental problems. I, I have a little bone to pick with the state for not taking better care and offering better facilities for that sort of thing. And it languishes with our police department. They have to deal with an awful lot of mental illness that looks like crime is crime, but diminished capacity. It's a very, I'm very sympathetic to this topic because the rates of mental illness have gone up. And I just think we've got to find a way. I approve of the police department handling it that way. I think we should have counselors in just about every area, really. Even, even in our fire department, you go to a fire and some of the houses that are, that catch on fire are the ones that are more susceptible to burning. And so there's a real emotional involvement in that. I just, I think that's a real key to fixing the criminal problem.
You know, it's a great question and the problem is, what we're talking about now is, or at least what Mrs. Klein is talking about, is spending more money than, that we don't have. And so what I would propose is that we would have a collaboration with Waterloo, Black Hawk County, Black Hawk Grande Melo Health Center, the City of Cedar Falls, in order to be more efficient with the money we have. Certainly, the state has cut this back, but it's cut it back to everybody and I think that's why we're having some of the problems we're having. But we have to deal with what we have to deal with. So we have to figure out a way to be more efficient with the money we have rather than talking about spending more.
Okay. All right. Next question. To what extent should infrastructure costs for new development be borne by developers versus existing taxpayers? And Steve, we'll have you start.
You know, historically, I think, years ago, the city had the developer pay for all the development costs. And again, it ended up being not a lot of development going on. And what happened is in other communities, the city started absorbing some of that with the idea in mind that they would make that back over time as these developments took off. And that seemed to work well. So I'm not saying that's the right answer, but I think that's what's being done in most communities today and it seems to be working. We've certainly got some good development going on in the south side of town. I'd love to see more. I hate to see in Waterloo, we have a habit of having an existing business moving from their current building to a new building and then their existing building sits empty. I'd much rather see us getting new employers coming to town. That's how we'll grow the population of Waterloo and get it back to where it was 30 or 40 years ago.
Thank you. Margaret?
I am very concerned about private businesses coming to the city and having us open our pockets. It has to be such a calibrated response in those instances. We just had an incident where the city has offered financial support to our local brewery. I disagreed with that decision. Like the developers, I think your private business is yours to run well or to run poorly. That's up to you. That's your efforts, your work ethic and your imagination and your risk. It is not our risk as citizens. You take that on. Some people do business very well and never run into troubles. Others find themselves falling into trouble. And the answer cannot be that you come to the city and get a bailout.
Okay. How would you make sure city residents are aware of and able to participate in budget decisions, major infrastructure projects, rezoning, or development proposals?
That's an easy one. Have the talks early, have them often, and maybe in different locations. Just make it convenient, different times of the day. I believe that the city council people do not receive budget information until way late. Our neighbors to the west usually have theirs done first of the year. We languish till the last minute. It's like everything sprung on you. I hate that. I don't think you can function well with that kind of a model. I would have the budget presented before the first of the year if I were in charge of it. As a councilperson, I would encourage that. And I would encourage neighborhood meetings based on that budget at different times of the day so that people can attend and hear and weigh in on it.
As was mentioned, I had businesses in Dubuque and Cedar Rapids in addition to Waterloo. And in those communities, excuse me, they would have their budgets figured out months before Waterloo. And every year, I would ask that question of our Chief Financial Officer at that time and she would say she just couldn't get the information from the department heads. I mean, we just kind of did a little finger-pointing episode. But the mayor should have been the one to request or demand that we get that information ahead of time, but we just got into a habit of doing that. And when I was on the council previously, I was one of the at-large council members, so I covered the entire city. And I went around to, I think we've got 28 neighborhood associations, the last time I looked, went around to those meetings on a consistent basis. And that would be a great venue to be able to roll the budget proposals out and get people in the loop.
Thank you. What steps will you take to revitalize Waterloo's downtown and neighborhoods?
Well, we've got to get some businesses downtown. You know, I was on the Main Street Board for a number of years. And thank God for Jim Walsh, that he did everything he did in downtown Waterloo. God bless him, he's passed, but he invested a tremendous amount of money in downtown Waterloo, was able to use the historic tax credits to be able to make that work. But now, as we see, and as former council member Klein mentioned, we've got a number of vacant buildings and I'm fearful that it's going to get worse rather than better. So we've got to, I think Waterloo spends too much time with, too much money with too many different entities trying to promote Waterloo. I think we should get in a very close alliance with Grow Cedar Valley and work very vigorously to get more businesses into downtown Waterloo because it is the, should be the showcase of the city.
Thank you. Margaret?
First thing I would do if I were in charge and in control of downtown, I would get rid of that idiotic parking system. It's not friendly to the users. It actually keeps people from coming down here since it was installed and actually, it was the brainchild of John Childs, our opponent. People have told me they used to come down here occasionally and they just will not anymore because you get out of your car and you got to go find the kiosk and get the key, the code. And it's a mess. It's a mess for people who have the time and the money to shop. We also have to clean up downtown. And that harkens back to the mental health issue. I remember when I was on council and we had just finished improving Lincoln Park and our young couple was walking through there one evening and they called me from the park and said, "We will never come back." A man had wandered into the park and used it as a bathroom in front of them. They were appalled. I'm appalled. You don't, that does not attract people.
Thank you. How would you prioritize investment between new development and improving existing areas?
How would I prioritize new development versus existing? New development's a great thing to have and there's no reason we shouldn't have it. We have rail system, we have airline, we have highway system, and we have unlimited water. So you have to ask yourself, what is the problem with us not getting new development? And it comes down to the two things we talked about, taxes and violence. So to help new development, I would clean up those taxes right away. I would attack the violence problem, which is related to the mental illness problem. That would handle the new development. The former development, I like the idea that people have been loyal to Waterloo and have stayed in Waterloo and I think lowering those taxes is going to help them. That's what I would do.
Okay.
I think a combination of new development and refurbishing what we have. As you drive around Waterloo, you see there are pockets of undeveloped space and I think we really need to focus on filling up some of those places. Also, as was mentioned, Habitat for Humanity on the housing side, got, I believe, a million-dollar grant from the State of Iowa. In the Church Road neighborhood, which is part of Ward 1, they're rehabilitating a number of very historical homes over there as they did over on West Third in the Walnut neighborhood. And I think that's a great impetus for that neighborhood. And I think 10 years from now, the Church Road neighborhood will be decidedly different than it is today. But in the meantime, we go back to Waterloo needs jobs more than anything else. It needs young people coming to town for good-paying jobs and growing our population base because everything else, whether it's leisure services or any of the enjoyments of life, are based on a population paying taxes and being able to pay for those things. And Waterloo right now is not growing.
How will you improve access to public transit, particularly for those who don't have reliable means of transportation?
Well, the current and former director of the Met Transit is a good friend of mine, or both of them are good friends of mine. But in the time I've been in Waterloo, which is 50-plus years, it just seems to me that our mass transit system just does not have a whole lot of activity. And I don't know if it's because the majority of Waterloo people own cars, so they don't use it, but as I watch the buses roaming around downtown, I own property in downtown for a number of years, they seem to be very unused and that's troubling. And I think we probably need to be taking a look at that and figuring out, again, is there a better, more efficient way to use that? I know in Iowa City, I believe, they're offering free bus rides. I don't think our buses are that expensive to ride, so I'm not sure that that necessarily warrants, you know, a thought. But I do think we need to take a look at it and figure out if the routes need to change, if we need smaller buses, or what exactly would be the answer. But having empty buses running around town is not probably a good thing.
Ridership is key to that and there's, there's been such a severe drop-off of ridership. I remember a time when I lived in Highland as a kid and we'd hop the bus every, every Saturday and go downtown Waterloo and shop. And those days are long gone because the, the impact of everyone owning cars. It doesn't matter what socioeconomic group you're in. You've usually got access to a car or a moped or a bike and that's the modus operandi of traveling around Waterloo. I would love to see a revitalization of our, of our Met Bus system. I really would. It's, it's a conundrum and we have to get to the bottom of it and I'm not sure where all the answers lie, but I think we should look into it.
Okay. What steps would you take to ensure transparency and accountability in the decision-making process for the city?
Wow, that is, that is the thing I harp on most. It's all these things that are done behind closed doors that bother me. It bothered me when I was on the city council. It bothered me to know that people out in the community might know more details about what was happening on a deal than I knew as a councilperson. It just, I'm a person that believes, really believes, that people, more people, need to be involved in our government, not less people. I'm not afraid of the people knowing the facts. I think when you hide things, it's out of fear. You're afraid they're going to criticize you, or you're afraid you might be caught doing something wrong. Well, don't do something wrong. Try to keep it as open and out there as possible. Get as many people from as variety of organizations and groups to be involved and present the material in a timely fashion.
Steve?
I don't think I happened to share this with you, but my little document, lower taxes, public safety, transparency. When I first came on the council, the meetings before the council meetings, the subcommittee meetings, nobody attended them, and they were not televised. So I requested that we televise them. The mayor at the time said, "Steve, you're always talking about cutting costs. Now you want to spend money to do that." I talked to the person that's in charge of the TVs set up here at the city, and he said, "We're already in the building. It wouldn't cost a dime more to televise those things." So we started televising all the subcommittee meetings and made those available to the citizens. Unfortunately, over the last six, eight years, the current administration has gone to having less meetings. We've gone to council meetings every other Monday night, and these subcommittee meetings have pretty much gone away. So I think there is far less transparency today than there was ten or twelve years ago, and I think that's critical. And I think going back to what was mentioned about this recent thing with the local brewery, that's the kind of thing that needs to see the light of day and needs to be discussed and needs to be in public.
This will be our last question before closing statements. What are your top two to three priorities, if elected, and what concrete steps would you take in your first year to begin addressing them?
Well, my top priority is to do everything I can to get businesses to come to Waterloo. So it would be a combination of working within the council structure and with the mayor and the chief financial officer to do everything we could do to get our tax rate at a more competitive rate. Also, excuse me, as I mentioned, working with Grow Cedar Valley to be more effective, for lack of a better term, on what we're doing to get businesses to come to Waterloo, because right now, it's just not happening. We have not had a major employer come to Waterloo, I don't believe, in the last ten or twelve years. We've had some nice businesses come to Waterloo, but nothing of any consequence. And I keep hearing that we come in second or third to Cedar Rapids or Dubuque or Des Moines on all these opportunities, but we don't get them. We do get some businesses that relocate, so we get some building revenue, and that's good. But again, those are just businesses moving. What we need is more jobs.
For me, my top one is taxes. I think that we need to get those TIF neighborhoods under control, bring them back online for the general fund, and, you know, at least have a sunset clause on some of them. Some of them don't have that, so they're going to exist forever. And the violence, I'm terrified of that violence. I have grandkids in this, in this city, and anyone out there that's got children and grandkids are concerned when they go out for the evenings. You want them to come home safely. And it's, it gets scary, and it's encroaching. I don't like that at all. And the deals that we make as a city, I do not like bailouts of companies. I don't like that sort of thing, and that has to be parsed very carefully.
All right. Well, thank you two very much for your answers. We will now go to closing statements, starting with you, Margaret.
Starting with me. Like I said, I was on the city council for four years. I loved my time on the city council, and I learned a lot. I learned that you're a better councilman if you're not afraid. If you're not afraid of telling the truth, if you're not afraid of the people, if you're not afraid of asking for help when you need help, it's a, it's a good posture to take as a councilperson. And now it's four years later, and I am less afraid than I've ever been in my life. I'm ready to work for Waterloo. I'm ready to try to improve Waterloo. I'm the kind of mother and grandmother that tells the truth to the kids. And sometimes they don't like that, and they might get upset with me, but they always know one thing about me. I'm going to tell them the truth.
Steve?
Well, as has been mentioned, at least three and possibly four of the city council seats are going to change this next year, actually even another one, depending on how the mayor's race turns out. So I think it's, it's critical that we can get as much experience, both private and public sector experience, onto the council starting next year. And I think what I bring to this conversation, with my twelve years on city council, representing the entire city, and then my forty-plus years in the business community, I think I bring that knowledge and that experience to this conversation. I think Waterloo has a lot of change, or a lot of challenges going forward, as do all communities. The world is a fast-changing place, but we've got to be able to sit down and make some common-sense, critical decisions, and we can do that, and do that with some efficiency built into it, if we will sit down and work collaboratively with some of the other communities and government agencies in the area. And so I appreciate your time tonight, Scott and Allison. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Both.
Thank you for running.
Nice job. You must do this for a living.
(laughing).
My pleasure.
You know, I've been doing this for a while.
Yeah?
Yeah.